Oh, wrong one. Alright, it's seven o'clock someplace. We'll go ahead and get started. Let me... Make sure I got the... Right. Not like we have a huge pile of stuff here. Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. And can, uh, let's see... You haven't been here before, have you? Alright, well, I'll tap you anyhow. You do the pledge for us, and then we'll do a moment of silence afterwards.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And as you're the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Alright, um, City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hoffauer?
Here.
Mayor Proton Bishop?
Here.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Here.
Councilmember Corio?
Here.
Councilmember Law?
Here.
Little forum.
Great. Okay, public comments, we have anybody, uh, from the public that'd like to make a comment? Seeing none, moving on, presentation. So who's, uh... Which dog or pony will start?
This pony.
Oh, the... The, uh, the...
EOC.
Nazzy, you're on.
Alright. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Nazzy. I'm the Emergency Services Coordinator for the City of Palmdale. Um, we are kind of giving you, um, an overview of what we've accomplished and what we've done in the past, um, year, year and a half since I've taken over this position. Um, and then kind of inviting over our, um, other first responding agencies, um, Fire Department and the Sheriff Department. Um, just gonna give you guys also, um, their, um, work in the past year, year and a half. Um, since I started with the position about February of last year, I wanna say, um, I've worked really, um, intensively with, um, our partners. Um, Sheriff Department, Fire Department, School Districts, um, Water Districts, all of our utility companies, um, County Hospitals. I should probably do this first. Uh, but it's not working. Now it's working. Sorry. Um, neighboring cities, uh, Edwards, um, Air Force Base, and Caltrans. Um, these relationships have helped with, um, cre- um, creation of some of our plans, um, some of our, um, uh, emergency operation plans, communication plans. Um, and will hopefully help with the city's overall response if we do have a disaster because each of these agencies, um, provide a lot of resources and we are also resources to those, um, set agencies. Um, I'm gonna invite, uh, LA County Sheriff Department for their presentation.
Good evening, I'm Ron Schaefer, the Captain of Palmdale Sheriff's Station. And we use the Incident Command System, which was developed by the Fire Department in California. It's now a system that goes nationwide. And we can utilize this system for both police activity and disaster preparedness. And so, police activity would be traffic collision, crime scenes, containment operations, and active shooters. The disasters would be earthquakes, wildfires, and floods. And so, what the Sheriff's Department does, whenever the disaster or the incident eclipses our ability to both provide service to the community, answering our calls for service, and handling the emergency, we would activate an incident management team. They come up, they bring up their command posts, um, I have a disaster communicators. That's a gratuitous plug for the mayor. And, uh, but we bring them out and they help us to manage the resources that get pulled up, both personnel, equipment, and supplies. And that, they will manage the emergency incident itself, and the deputies will go back to responding calls for service in the community to make sure everything's safe. Many times when we get activated, it's usually in unified command with the Fire Department, CHP, other law enforcement agencies. And again, we would deal with the disaster that way. Primarily in disasters, we're mostly used for evacuations. And the law enforcement stuff would be containing a, a crime scene, again, evacuating areas so that a SWAT team or other services could come in and deal with the emergency. And that's primarily the extent of it. The, the last year since we've had Nazzy, it's been great because she's facilitated our collaboration with our other first responders throughout the Antelope Valley. We've had disasters up here that we've responded to, uh, but she's really tied it into Palmdale and then getting us into the greater part of the AB, so great addition to the Palmdale team.
Thank you, Captain. Chief Sullivan?
Should I use the clicker?
You wanna use the clicker?
Sure.
There you go.
Which one do I hit? Just the...
The next one, yeah.
Perfect.
We'll see if it works.
See how this goes with the clicker.
I'm trusting you'll...
Mayor City Council, how are you? Tom Sullivan, I'm your fire chief up here with the Los Angeles County Fire Department. And to kind of piggyback on what Ron's saying, I think we've got a good thing going up here with the City of Palmdale. Um, the collaboration that we have with the city and be able to talk, working with Naz, has been great. Ron and I, to, to let you guys know behind the scene, we kind of almost talk daily of what's happening. And I know Ron and I are talking all the time to bring each other up to date. And with Nazzy, we're talking all the time and making sure that you guys are aware of what's happening in your city. And sometimes, I'll even let her know what's happening in the unincorporated areas that might be part of your districts or close to it, to make sure that she's well aware of what's going on. You see smoke in the air, you see fire trucks. So we are talking, texting all the time, uh, making sure, and the collaboration's been great. I could read right off this thing. Sometimes I just like talking to you, so you're hearing it from me. Um, when we work together with the EOC that you have, uh, is awesome. We've already had a couple incidents that have coming up, or that have come up, that we've been able to work through with your Fire Department, with your Sheriff's Department, with all the first responders, and particularly with the city and having the voice from the city, so it's been great. The background of the LA County Fire Department, obviously, you've been saving lives more than ninety years. Uh, over the years, our firefighters have saved thousands of lives or properties throughout the Antelope Valley. And as you see, is everybody has a mission statement. And our mission statement with the Los Angeles County Fire Department is to protect lives, the environment, and, and property by providing prompt, skillful, and cost-effective protection, uh, in life safety services. Your City of Palmdale, uh, the strength of Battalion Seventeen, and I brought the Battalion Chief, uh, Steve Bartram with me, one of your three Battalion Chiefs that you have on a fifty-six hour work week out here. He is here twenty-four hours, basically acting on my behalf when I'm not here running the incidents out there. And with the nine fire stations that you have here in the Palmdale area, incorporated and unincorporated area, twenty fours, thirty sevens, Fire Station Seventy-nine, Fire Station Eighty, ninety twos, ninety threes, one fourteen's, one thirty ones, and one thirty sixes, with the Battalion Headquarters, where the Battalion Chief is housed, is Fire Station Ninety-three over on R there. The fire stations that you see that are up there are just part of the Antelope Valley. The great thing about your Fire Department, and when we're all working together with, with sheriffs and with the city, is any time you call nine-one-one, as you're well aware, and with the services that we provide, we could have an army up here in a matter of minutes, or in, in the services that we're providing in terms of all of your fire station, all your paramedic squads that are coming. Uh, I'll be, you know, talking to you guys shortly here. I'm also looking at putting another paramedic squad up here in the Antelope Valley and also looking at the Palmdale area. The Antelope Valley are, are strength with Division Five, so I'm the Assistant Chief or the Fire Chief, they're calling me now, of Division Five. You can see all the stations, over twenty stations that we have up here with call firefighters that are, are volunteers or they're, they're paid per call up here. And there, there are actually one-twelves, one-forties, and one-fifty-sevens. Um, we have some in the unincorporated areas, but none here in Palmdale. But again, alls we do is call them and they can come out. Some of the special...
Remember when ninety twos was called?
I think, correct. Is that what, yeah? So it's been a little bit, but, uh, we are looking at that program to, to really start to bolster that program. Some of the things that you have that we are always working closely with is some of the resources that you guys have. I was gonna say a, a, a word, but it's awesome. Yeah, and, and to know that when you guys call nine-one-one, to know what is coming up the freeway, down the freeway, or from wherever, i- it's, it's bar none. It's number one, that what you have here and with the people that you have serving the city. We have your Urban Search and Rescue, uh, Fire, uh, at Fire Station One Thirty-six there. Your Urban Search and Rescue is world renowned. We've been out on calls, uh, they got called up for the, the hurricane that we just had. We sent people that are part of the Swiftwater, Type One Swiftwater Team from One Thirty-sixes. When we had the Ridge Crest, uh, Ridge Crest earthquake, that we all, again, be very lucky and fortunate of how we're all talking during that time. That we were talking and we actually sent One Thirty-sixes up there to assist our brothers and sisters up in Kern County. We have a Ha- Hazardous Materials Task Force located at One Twenty-nines, um, right off the, of Avenue M there. Your Air Operations Heavy Equipment Team, Super Scoopers that are now online. Your Air Operations, when, when people talk to me as your Fire Chief, and, you know, talking with Nazzy, and Ron knows this, you have a Blackhawk here in your city or close to your city at Fire Station One Twenty-nine, almost twenty-four hours a day. Staff equipped with a paramedic, that we are always flying people into the trauma centers, unfortunately, AV, but if we have children or pediatrics, we're able to pick them up. Any of your, people are always asking, hey, what happened to the brush season this year? It's because of the good effective work that your Los Angeles County Fire Department with our brush inspections, getting your citizens prepared with ready, set, go, with defensible space, getting out there and doing all, we had in your area, uh, I'm gonna say approximately over five to seven hundred roughly brush inspections this year. That everybody, we went out on every property and everybody that wasn't compliant got turned in, but they're eventually gonna be compliant coming in. But that season is coming, and that's what we, that's what we always keep talking about. And anytime anybody sees smoke in the air, her first call is to me or from Ann or from Ron about what's going on. And we are collaborating, collaborating and working, and I let her know if this is a good one or if not. Um, but when nine-one-one and you get a brush response into this area, which you get with LA County Fire Departments, are seven fire engines, a squad, BCs, you're getting three Blackhawks, you're gonna get two Super Scoopers, and you're gonna get four camp crews, patrols, water tenders, that's what we are providing out here every single day. And the reason I'm saying that is we're, we're talking the whole time, uh, behind the scenes, and their first call, Nazzy's first caller, Ron, to I, will be, this is it, or this isn't. So we've been very lucky and very fortunate over the last couple of years. Again, our Blackhawks, uh, we have two more Blackhawks that are coming onboard. They should be come on station here within the next couple of months with LA County. They're just getting outfitted with, uh, I didn't know that aircraft paint costs so much, and it has to go up to Colorado, but those are the things we're waiting on and getting radios and just getting it outfitted for the daily. We now have a FLUR on one of our copters, a forward-looking infrared, so when we go out, we're able to map a fire at night and see where the hotspots are at. Outside responding to daily calls and assisting local communities each day, the Los Angeles County firefighters provide, uh, assistance nationally. As we had talked about, Urban Search and Rescue, uh, California Task Force Team always is, remains on, on, uh, on station, and they can deploy it at any time within a couple hours, and you've seen them on the news and going out. And we've kind of, uh, we've been to the, they've been to Japan a couple of years ago, obviously, uh, with, uh, they're, again, helping out with the, uh, Hurricane Dorian. Uh, anything that comes up, we can be called on moments' notice, and this is, this is ours, this is your USAR, to be very proud of, to know that, hey, these are the people in our community that live here too, that are out there helping the people, and it's a, it's a great feeling. Some of the things, some of the toys, I guess, that we bring, obviously, you have within, uh, minutes, uh, I house a bulldozer, One Twenty-nine, at Fire Station One Twenty-nine. It's, it's a D-eight, it's one of the biggest bulldozers there is. Uh, the reason that I haven't had to come to Nazzy or to the city manager or to the mayor or to the council to say, to talk about our big fire, we've been doing pretty good, and so our bulldozers will get out there and really circle the fire. They do a tremendous job out there if you've ever seen them. Picture of the hazmat up top up there, you have a Level One hazmat here in Los Angeles County. We have one right down the street at One Fifty's in the city, uh, uh, Golden Valley, I believe, and the fourteen in the city of Santa Clarita area. A picture of your hazmat right there. That's not ours, that looks like a Calfire, uh, dropping FOSS check there. We do not drop the FOSS check, but when we call for it, again, the nice thing, Naz, we got a good one coming up. Uh, and we can call Calfire on, on the great, uh, MOUs and agreements that we have. We can have fixed wing aircraft here and note, we can have them within twenty minutes, either coming out of, uh, Fox or coming out of Hemet Ryan. Just another picture of some of the stuff that we're doing with our camp crews out there and in doing evacuations, large animal. And the other thing that we have down there is from USAR One-O-three, which we're gonna try eventually to get up here. That's just a heavy rescue tender. Uh, does good for, obviously, uh, pulling up horses. Uh, we've had that building collapse, uh, kind of right on the border. It's able to help us lift beams if there's anything that we need to get into. It's another great tool, another great asset that your Fire Department, your Los Angeles County Fire Department has that is, alls I have to do is call. All the things that we do, we all know what the Fire Department does, or hopefully we do, in terms of, uh, structure fires, uh, rescues and, uh, rescues and emergency medical. Are one of our biggest things out here, is almost eighty-five percent of our call volume is due to EMS or emergency medical services. Your hazmats, your, your mobile property fires, your natural vegetation fire, outside rubbish fires, false alarm calls and service calls, and just good natured calls. We're just out there to help whatever comes up. And again, I think Ron hit it at the end of his, is... Be very comfortable with the communications that we are all having, and again, I can't overemphasize that it's on a daily basis. If it's not a text message, if it's not a phone call, a heads up or whatever, that, uh, that's kind of a good feeling, working with the city that has the people in the right places to do the right things. Thank you.
But Chief?
Yes.
Before you go away?
Yes, Mayor.
With the, uh, with the, uh, the broadband, uh, uh, what were they calling it? Oh, I've drawn a blank on it. Huh?
I have too.
Yeah, LA RICS?
Right, yeah, yeah. RICS and the, and the, there was a, they had another name for it too. Uh, so they were trying to demonstrate it to us one day, uh, down at, um, uh, uh, down on, um, so down on Eastern? And, uh... Yeah, so moving all the data around and stuff like that? Oh, boy.
It's just been a couple of years?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years, it's that radio system that connects all the other...
No, not the RICS system, it's, it's the other one.
FirstNet?
FirstNet, yeah.
I'm gonna have to get back, yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Kind of like Skynet?
Correct, I haven't heard anything. That'll be a discussion for probably another day in terms of where we are, um, economically with the Fire Department right now. So I think a lot of things are on hold, especially our radios and communication capabilities right now. We're kind of working on a system that's about twenty years old right now, and so we're trying to update that, but it's gonna be, we kind of have an uphill climb right now with the Fire Department on that.
I know that, um, we had a FirstNet Committee down at, I was on that down at SCAG, uh, just to take a look at all of our cities', um, planning and ordinances to make sure we weren't getting in the way of the FirstNet capacities. But I know that at one point, there was only like one tower out here. And I think LA had like seventy of them already down in the basin.
You know what, I'll get back to you on that, Mayor. I haven't heard any conversations or anything that's coming across my...
It's gotten real quiet.
That is correct, and so, again, just due to the, uh, economics of what's happening right here, as you well know, that's millions of dollars to upgrade the systems. So I think we are working on that to always upgrade the systems, but we're kind of being, uh... We're working on the system.
Sure.
So I, I haven't heard anything about any kind of upgrades or anything on the LA RICS system, correct?
Yeah, it's been at least a year since I've seen you.
Yeah. Okay.
Just a comment, is, uh, the bulldozer, had, this bulldozer has a capacity to go straight up hills?
You know, uh...
The one that...
Oh, yeah. Eh, well, I'll tell you what, our, our, our operators are highly trained at, at how they're, they're hired. And some of the places that they get themselves into, the attitude and the pitch that they put these things on. Uh, it, it depends on the operator of where they're at, but I've seen them do some pretty crazy things, uh, and it, it's, it's the side hill stuff that if you ever wanna ride one time, and I'm around, come around on a side hill one time, and, you know, and they just have the smiles on their face, and you're going, and you're, you can't hold on tight enough as they're pitching. But, yeah, they, I've seen them do, uh, just awesome things up there.
We had a fire, uh, near the Aqueduct, Latin, not this year, but the year before, Fourth of July. And, uh, so seeing that this, uh, bulldozer's coming up, and then all of a sudden going straight up the hill, and I said, man, this guy's gonna flip over. I mean, it was like, straight up.
Oh, believe me.
It was crazy.
Oh, believe me, and I, it's our, heli, I mean, they're, they're true professionals in what they do, and there's sometimes even myself, when I get in and take a ride, I gotta hang on and make sure that my, my harness is on pretty tight when they're doing that stuff, so... Yeah, it's, oh, believe me, it's not tight enough sometimes.
Is this just the piece of equipment you have pictured here?
Yes, that is correct, and so that's out of Fire Station One Twenty-nine on a daily basis, and, um, we're, we're, we're coming up to everyday's fire weather up here, it seems like, and, uh... We can say it with a smile on our face, because as firemen, when we do our weather predictions, and we always come up as almost being extreme every single day, because, you know, it's gonna be windy in the AV, and we all, it's always windy out here. That's a breeze to us out here. That, that's not wind as we've seen, so, uh, things are drying out, we're gearing up for, the Santianas are gonna be starting up, as we all know. And I, again, we always are talking about fire weather, the PSPS's that we're having with Edison coming out with doing the power shutdown grids. We're talking all the time to make sure that everybody's aware of these things, 'cause that could kind of throw us in a tail, but we'll be able to handle that. Um, and we've been trying to get out there with the, the Ready, Set, Go program throughout Palmdale, working with my CSL, my Community Service Liaisons, to make sure that we're out there handing out the brochures, getting the pamphlets out and for the Ready, Set, Go program that's out there.
What procedures are in place, uh, in the event of a catastrophic earthquake, you know, since we're so close to the Santa Claus?
We're, we're on the earthquake fault out here on the Santa, and we all, like, again, we're all here, and I think the Ridge Crest woke us all up there on Fourth of July. Um, we are working diligently, working with the EOC. I have a Battalion Chief Gary Harris, who's kind of my liaison, working with the city when I'm not able to be here, working with Nazzy and Ron and... working with Nazzy and Ron and everybody, I'm working with the EOC. The LA County Fire Department, we also, not to be confused, we also, in the event that we lose, we're gonna think of the big one. We lost all communications, we're shut off.
Guys go to division communication.
We do, we go to, so in that division, I have an EOC, or I hate to use that, I have a dispatch center in the event that that the captains or that the respective sheriff stations lose their communications, we would send liaisons and I would run the battalion, or I would run the division out of One Twenty-Nines and then activate however we needed to do to work out, activate the EOCs, get liaisons. And we've been having meeting after meeting, working on coming up with a training program, uh coming up with a live exercise on on all types of risks, everything that's coming up. Cause there may be a time that you activate the EOC, but we still have to be able to answer those calls on the PSAP to work with your EOC to have a liaison. So, we have a plan all in place and he knows where he's gonna go, I know where I'm gonna go to run the division, and Nazzy knows where, again, as we're talking. We had a little thing, if you if you were aware, a couple of months ago with the P- the the PSAP went down.
We're gonna talk about it.
Oh, we are?
Yeah.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna steal or thunder there.
Feeling my thunder here.
I don't wanna steal that, so. I can't, I I think we're here to kind of uh, we know the big ones are coming. And and I I I can speak, I I think for all of us with LA County Fire Department in your city, we can train all we want and we've, this is what we do. I personally have probably been on some of the biggest incidents that you've heard, read, did, and we always are able to get through, there's that first ten minutes of, okay, setting everything up. But our our main intentions is that the citizens are safe, that we do the right thing to to make sure the citizens are safe and and to have a plan. And we have a plan, it's almost like the break glass, we have a plan on everything, whatever. W- we've had our floods here with the monsoons that came in, with the lake incident out there. We've had minor earthquakes, we've had power outages, we've had the Crown Fire, we've had the station, we've had all these things. And I think working in the collaboration that we are, y- you can be pretty confident that we'll be able to handle anything that happens within your city.
One of the memories I have of the seventy-one quake is on a morning of um going to register at Cal State Northridge, register for the school. And on the, and we went, traveling from Van Nuys to Northridge. On the way over there, we saw several fires, probably because of um maybe gas pipes that it that didn't get shut off automatically. How how prepared are we in Palmdale, as far as that's concerned? We have a lot of housing that's been built back in the fifties, sixties, and so on. How prepared are we for for gas that might rupture and fires resulting?
Well, that that's probably a case-by-case basis. Um, what we try and do is provide the preparedness with the LA County website, you know, that we have everything out there on how to secure your home. Um, you know, properly how to turn off the gas and when to turn off the gas.
Or if to turn off the gas.
That's correct, and that's, that happens a lot too, cause people will go right to turn off the gas, turn off the electricity, and they really didn't need to do it. They reactivate the gas and now they created a fire. I I think that, I I don't know if I could quantify, you know, give you an answer, because uh it's all out there. I know the gas company's doing a great job in terms of trying to educate the their public and and I get it at my home and see the pamphlets and read them. Um, uh, we might be a little bit more ahead, cause we know when to turn it off. I think there's great education out there with the gas companies, with the cities that are putting it out, with LA County Fire Department, with our website, you know, gas hazards, electric, what to do after the earthquake. We're we're almost ready, we're we're all prepared, and I just think it's uh, when it does happen, I don't know if if, hopefully they heed the warning and they know what to do, because we're, we're gonna be doing, they always tell us to be prepared for three days. I think in the AV, we're gonna have to be prepared for three weeks by the time-
I know, I know one of the things that uh, having gone through Northridge, uh we were out there doing a dance in the middle of the street when that thing hit. And um, uh, nothing gets your attention faster than watching your engine dance, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Out there. But um, we could always tell where DWP was turning circuits back on, because we were, we were in the South Valley, we were up at Northridge Meadows, that kind of stuff. But over the next several days, you could look out across the valley and you could see where they turned out the power, because that's where the fires were.
Another fire.
Cause, cause they turned it, turned the circuit back on and the lamps were laying over, or something was laying on, and that's, that's where the problem would be, you know? So, um, yeah, that's a, that that's a real valid point, and I just think that I think we all need to do a better job of of getting the public educated on uh, sometimes you need to shut stuff off, but, you know. The real key is being careful how you turn it back on.
That's correct.
That's where the problem comes from.
And again, I think the gas company does a great job working with them and the educational programs, it's just that people go and look at him and I know it's part of the bill and they put it in with flyers, they're trying to do everything they can. And we, we kind of pick up the pieces a- at the end or what have you and come and and I know the city probably has something going on, the education, 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 educations. I think it's just that people read it and do it and uh-
It's easy to overlook this stuff, especially cause we're on a fault line, but if the one thing's that's proven true, it's the preparation through education is a lot less costly than learning through a tragedy.
That is, and and we speak that with you, you know, and just trying to get it out, it's just getting, we do as much as we can with the Fire Department and get out there. And you've seen our displays, and when we're out there, um, we have handouts for everything. It just depends on on what they do with those handouts and how to read them.
Ron, can you uh help us with this, a couple of things here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you. So you got the Reader's Digest version presentation there.
Keep it simple, one more, you called me up, hey?
So, we've got a lot of specialized stuff up here, uh, you know. Tom's guys have got a lot of their toys and stuff onsite here. Um, that's one of the questions that I get a lot is, how long does it take us to get the other specialized law enforcement resources up here? Short of setting up a containment, uh but when you start talking about, you know, SEB, I know a few years back, they moved all the K-nines down below, uh, uh, I know we have Air Five. You wanna talk about some of those other specialized resources that uh that are available? And then, and that um, uh, what's the, I mean, what 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 could we expect as far as the uh, I mean, do we have a Bearcat up here or does each each area?
We do have a a Bearcat at Palmdale Station and we can mobilize that. Again, primarily our our role in these things are, for the most part, it's gonna be a containment and evacuations. And we can mobilize deputies, they just jump on a radio car and they come zooming up. So, we borrowed from Lancaster and Santa Clarita Stations frequently for a variety of things. We might only get one or two deputies at a time, a lot of times that's all we need to hold the spot, again, so we can free up our deputies to go handle calls for service. We also have a lot of people that live in the community, that uh, a lot of our canine handlers, it's quite a few of them live up here. And so, they're able to mobilize right from home and help us with scouting missions and inquiring further. When uh we need to get a SEB team up here, if they have to drive, it could be an hour and a half to get them up here. But when it's an urgent thing, we'll put them in a helicopter and we'll fly them up, and that happens pretty regularly.
So, uh, our uh Air Twenty-Nine we have up here, right? We share that with Palmdale, Lancaster, Santa Clarita, and lots of-
North County, correct, Santa Clarita through Lancaster.
Okay. And then uh, I know we have Air Five?
Air Five is gonna be countywide, uh, we have our paramedic on that one and they will go wherever they're needed. So, they spend a lot of time in in the Angeles National Forest, uh but a variety of other places. When there's a medical transport, they've come up here and they've helped transport down into the basin.
Okay. And then um, as far as uh, I uh, you guy, uh, county fire, you, uh, all of the um mobile command post stuff, that comes out of uh Eastern?
No, uh, Mayor, we have one and uh each, each bureau or each division will have, or I'm sorry, each, North Ops has one, Central Ops, East Ops. So, it comes out of One Forty-Three's, One Twenty-Six's, Santa Clarita area. So, the mobile, it could probably be here within twenty minutes, thirty minutes traffic.
Okay. And then you've, you've got the, you've got the the uh Winnebago thing?
Right, we have a command post at Palmdale Station.
You have the Fritos truck?
Yes, it's a beautiful thing circa nineteen eighty-five, you know? But um, uh, so we'll, we'll mobilize that when we have an incident out here. The uh Emergency Operations Bureau, they have the big fifty-foot trailer, uh for three-foot trailer, also a communications trailer. And again, we've had some major incidents up here, well, they they will bring that up here. And then operation usually goes through the night, and then they'll just package it back up and send it back out.
Right.
So.
Captain, that was a good meeting the other night with the sheriff.
Yes, it was, yeah, very positive.
MC, I guess, handled all the questions and everything, but-
I've worked for food, yes.
Great participation by the public and uh, it it was handled in a very, very uh, let's say, very positive manner.
Yes.
Uh, I think the public uh could see what the sheriff's about and and what he wants to do for the communities and so on. And and it was good to see that both of our captains uh were well appreciated by the public as well.
I- indeed, uh, sheriff was very pleased about how it went. He's, he's done eighteen of these town halls, he is planning to make his way throughout the whole county uh each year that he's in office. So, he will come back, this is gonna be an annual event for him, which is good. The public does look to see him and talk to him and engage with him. He's been up here for other speaking engagements and he's usually sold out the room, uh which is good, so he's a big draw. And uh, and it was very informative.
Just wanna get a little bit more lead time on it in the future, you know, so we can know what's going on. And I'd already responded, uh, well, those guys got me a hat.
You know what, there, everybody's hero. Yeah, he's my hero too, look, he's he's camera-ready right now.
But that was good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I knew I had these guys to handle it, so. Alright, so back to Nazzy.
Alright.
This point, right?
Yes. So, um, Captain Schaefer and uh Chief Sullivan kind of um mentioned all the great work that they do um, providing services to the public um here in the city. But um, it's, it's really important to remember that we also have um uh response capa- uh capabilities in the city, our public works, um, our building officials, uh during disasters are ve- are very active. Um, and um, if you look at that, um, I'm gonna use this thing, apparently, there you go. Um, so in emergency uh preparedness, planning is a big part of what we do. And the very first step in planning is bringing the right players um into the room. When I came here, uh, one of the first people that I built that connection with was um, um, our very own public works uh guys. Uh, so Bruce was a big part of how I started here.